We call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, June 17th, 2019, 6:30 PM, City Council Room. Alderman Shanet, not Shanet, Charbonneau. I spoke to you, because I decided to stop today, that's why. Charbonneau is absent. Others present include Laura Dogan, our City Manager, and James Johnson, our City Court Treasurer. The next item is to approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2019. And we gain a motion. If you so choose.
Okay. Do you approve the minutes?
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
They've seconded. Discussion on the minutes. Anyone else in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is comments by members of the public. Nobody had signed up to speak on anything. So we will move on. The next item is the bike path pedestrian grant application and vote. And we have Mike Welch from NCIC to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As you know, my name is Mike Welch with NCIC. We received a grant through USDA to work with the city to try to find funding for some of the priority projects here in the community that have been identified through the Waterfront Master Plan and through other initiatives that have gone on in the city over the years. One of the things that has is noted in both the downtown Waterfront Master Plan and also a sidewalk intersection study that was done in 2017 is improvements to the intersection down at the entrance to the waterfront plaza, Gardner Memorial Park, and Main Street. There were additional improvements that have been recommended. Thomas Berninger has recommended some other improvements that were mentioned in the intersection study, which includes kind of connecting the intersections leading up to that. So starting at East Main Street, coming down to the Interstate Access Road, and then down to the Gardner Memorial Park Road. And so we actually have some sequencing between those lights that would be done electronically. In addition, there would be improvements made to the pedestrian signalization, improvements made to the intersections themselves, improvements on the lighting, and the traffic signalization. So there's a fair amount of work that would be done throughout that area, primarily at Gardner Park area, but leading all the way up to East Main Street. So Tom had done some construction estimates that were included in the report. These were done initially as part of the 2017 study. Tom has looked at some additional work and upgraded those. So Tom's estimated the total project cost to be $735,500. What we're looking at is the Vermont Bike and Pedestrian Program that those applications are due on June 28th. That is funded through a federal highway grant, so it's 80% funding can be available through the grant if this is approved. There is a 20% match requirement, and with this particular grant, it cannot be in kind. It has to be cashed. So there is a cash-in-kind commitment for the total project. That will require a commitment of $147,100. The way these federal highway projects work is that they happen over a fairly long period of time. So typically it is three to four years by the time you go through an actual design process, bidding process, construction, and then close-up. So it can be a very extended period of time. We would obviously try to move that along as quickly as we could in the event that the grant is approved. But it's not like you have to do this within a one-year period. It is a multi-year program. I did talk with Doug Morton today just to verify that the types of improvements that we listed here in this application are eligible activities, and he felt that they certainly would be, particularly making the argument that improving access for both pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists at all three of those intersections, leading to the sidewalks, leading to the pedestrian ways, and the bike path, the connections that you've already been working on to the Bluffside Farm, and to the Promenade Beach Connector. So there's just a lot of things to make a positive application, I think, for this. So what we're asking is for the City Council to consider a letter of support. I know City Manager Dogan has drafted a letter, and what the grant requires is that the City Council or the legislative body has to provide a letter of support indicating that the 20% local match would be available in the event that the grant is actually awarded. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions. Tom is also here, and Tom can certainly respond to any of the technical details. And that's it.
Another question. What is the timeline of when you submit the grant and knowing when we possibly could receive it?
What they've put in the application is that the applications are due on June 28th. They expect to make decisions and grant awards by September or October of this year. So it would probably be toward the fall, which would be the federal fiscal year before we'd actually have a notification of award. And just one other point. We did apply for a portion of this project through the Northern Border Regional Commission Grant. This is kind of a backup to that, so that it's just another funding opportunity should that grant not be awarded, or not be awarded in its entirety. This will give us another placeholder by getting an application in for eligible activities associated with this project.
Another question. Oh, I'm thinking.
I talk myself all the time. Just ignore me.
Questions from council members? I think, oh, go ahead.
Is this the full amount, or is it some dollar amount between like zero and that $735,000?
That's a great question. I think that we would look at wording to apply for the maximum as outlined here. I mean, that's what we envisioned the project to be, so it would be the maximum amount of that $775,000 with a 20% match.
Other questions from council members? There's no motion, but I'm not gonna accept until I at least have a motion.
Okay. So it's just an informational question, but I'll ask after.
Yeah. I want to follow my procedure where we have motions, and then seconds, and then I open it up for discussion. So, any more questions from council members? Yes, Mr. Ross?
When is the other, the other one that we applied for?
Probably be, they typically make those decisions in July, so we should be here all that.
Would we know that before this one?
We will, before they make the decision. So depending upon what happens with the NBRC, number one, if it's denied, we can just leave this other project moving forward. If it's partially awarded, we could amend this application. And if it is awarded in full, we could either amend this application down or withdraw. So this, it just gives you an opportunity to seek this other funding source.
What was the match on the NBRC?
That's also a point to set, but it doesn't have to be cash.
That could be in kind.
That can be in kind. The way we wrote the application is it's a combination of cash and in kind.
Okay. Other questions from council members? Then I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the request. A motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion from council members, and then...
I have a question about whether or not, if you got a part of the funding from Northern whatever.
Yep.
Could that money count as the 20% for this match?
The way that the programs work is that, and it's possible that some of it could, no more than 80% of the total project can be federal money. So we're both Northern Border and Vermont, like PEP, are federal money. No more than 80% of the total project can be. So it depends, you know, it's possible that a piece of it could be, but together, no more than 80% can be federal money.
Go ahead.
Maybe you said this. I didn't hear. When was the estimate of the, what year was the estimate on the total cost for those projects?
So the original estimates were prepared by Stantec Engineering in September of 2017, when they did the sidewalk intersection study. Our Palm has taken that information and gotten updated estimates. So that's what we based this on.
It's updated. That's all I wanted to know.
Yep.
Okay.
Don't wait. You're gonna wait? All right. Anything else? What?
The next thing.
We haven't had a bone on the shift. Anything else? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, could somebody explain the benefit and why, how does it better be using the taxpayer dollars? I realize there may not be Newport City dollars, tax dollars, but some of these tax dollars.
The benefit of applying for any grant is because it's a bigger pool of funding, and you don't have to go to the local taxpayers for the entire project. Because this is a $735,000 project, if we could get all of what, $147,000 paid for through grants, that's a win-win for the local taxpayers. It means we don't have to raise the local taxes by that amount or even bond for it. And we know that infrastructure is something that we have to do, you know, we have to maintain infrastructure. And if we can get grant money like some of the other grants that we've been awarded, that helps alleviate the local share of the cost. Other communities around the country are applying for grants too, so we might as well take advantage of getting, become part of that pool of having grants.
So it's an improvement to the city's infrastructure?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a copy of what you signed it, or is there a copy available?
Actually, he can have this.
I can give you this one. This isn't what's being signed. All that's being signed is a letter of support. This is a description of the project and the cost of this.
Perfect. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Okay. We voted back. Okay, so now sign this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe nobody layers your wedding dress.
I think I'm just running hot these days.
My hot hour.
I'm more up to bat for it.
That's okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is dementia-friendly Vermont. Pam Smith, Director of Family and Caregiver Support for the Northeast Kingdom Council of Asia.
All right, great. And I brought up my agenda because I always forget to introduce myself, but you just did it. So thank you. So I didn't need to bring this up. But I'm really excited to be able to be here and tell you about this initiative of dementia-friendly communities. I serve on the Governor's Commission of Alzheimer's Disease, and they've decided to make this their initiative for this year. So I spoke up, and I said, "I think I have the perfect community, Newport, Vermont." And because we already had an age-friendly group that's meeting, and, you know, and Newport, to me, as someone who doesn't live here, seems to be on the cusp of redefining who they are as a community. Am I, is that somewhat right, or no? Yes. Thank you. So it's like, why not, this is just the perfect place to start. So we know, I tried to get some really good statistics, and I tried really hard to find out what the population was in Newport and surrounding areas. So I'm considering all of the Newport area. And I'm not sure I should talk to you or them. Both? All right. Over here, we're both. So, so we know that, first of all, I'll ask the question. Does anybody have a family member that has dementia or Alzheimer's disease in here? So do you know of a family or somebody that has Alzheimer's disease? And I think if we raised our hands, we would find out that at least a third of us knows somebody that is suffering from Alzheimer's. And I'm going to use Alzheimer's and dementia back, kind of back and forth. So whenever I do a program, I always try to answer the number one question, what's the difference between Alzheimer's disease and dementia? So the answer is everything and nothing. So you can use the terms. Dementia is a symptom. It's just a loss of cognitive function that affects activities of daily living. There's hundreds of diseases that cause dementia, Alzheimer's being the number one cause of dementia. So in order to get started, I've asked Laura if she would just, I have a couple of short videos that I think is going to explain. We'll get started with that.
Is there volume on this, or is it just pictures?
Oh, it should be on here, whatever's on your computer.
So is there sound?
There is sound.
Unmute. What do you think, TVs? See if you can volume up. Now I can't get the sound going. But you do.
Yes, yours muted on your laptop.
It's a, it's a Vira.
Alzheimer's disease is expected to increase 13.8. If you ever knew someone or told yourself one living with dementia in your community, at the bank, the grocery store, or a restaurant. Although advancing age is the greatest risk factor for developing Alzheimer's, even those who are younger can exhibit symptoms. Dementia affects each person differently. In the early stages, it may be difficult to recognize someone living with the disease because he or she is still independent and can engage in meaningful conversation. Potential signs include difficulty communicating, getting lost, becoming frustrated, exhibiting confusion, repeating words and phrases, poor judgment, and unusual or inappropriate behavior. Research shows that stigma surrounding dementia can lead to isolation for both those living with the disease as well as their family members. That's why it's so important to better understand dementia and how to help individuals continue to play a role in their community. When encountering a person with dementia, consider these tips. Treat the person with dignity and respect. Avoid talking past the person as if he or she isn't there. Be patient and supportive. Let the person know you're listening and trying to understand. Avoid criticizing or correcting. Offer comfort and reassurance. If he or she is having trouble communicating, reassure the individual that it's okay and encourage the person to continue. Living with value and purpose in a community is a human right. Communities must consider ways to make services more accessible for people living with dementia, just as they have made services more accessible to people with physical disabilities. Every segment of the community and every individual has a unique opportunity to make a significant difference in the lives of people living with dementia.
Hey, Mr. Frederickson, is two there at the grocery store?
Yeah.
Come on, I'll deal.
To learn more about how you and others can help those living with dementia remain engaged in the community, view our short videos that provide guidance for specific professions at dementiafriendsusa.org.
So that one's kind of an overview of what dementia is, and then we're going to show us another one about dementia-friendly America specifically, what that entails. With sound, I hope.
It is not a failing of character. It is not a weakness. It is a disease, and so we must disentangle this notion that dementia is a natural part of the aging process, or it is something to be ashamed of. I was ignorant about the disease when I was guy goes. I had to get in and work. I didn't know the legal idea. I was just trying to educate. A dementia-friendly community is a community in which every sector of community supports dementia. Making sure that those who are in a dementia community try to access dementia.
It's on the video. I don't think it's... Really? I think it's, oh, the other one is...
That's what I think, too. Thank you. You're welcome. Yeah. Let's just get this back. Sorry, gang.
Dementia-friendly is a state of mind.
Notice, notice what's the interaction here. Don't bring it out.
It's educating others that you can be inclusive. All of your family members can be at the table, including the person that has dementia. They do not have to be excluded.
It's my hope that with through dementia-friendly America, that people will walk towards people with dementia and see how they can ensure that they are part of the community rather than walking away and making them feel isolated.
The best way for an individual to get active in the dementia-friendly movement is actually to go to dfamerica.org, where you can go online, get a basic education about what dementia is, and how to respond to people with dementia, and participate simply as a member of a community in helping the community become more dementia-friendly.
What a world of difference that would make in the daily lives of people with dementia, caregivers, tourists, and anyone else in that community. No judgments, no preconceived notions, no fear, no resentment, no pause, just help.
Just help. So what I wanted to bring up with the bus driver is the gentleman did not know how much to pay, so instead of just taking the money, he pointed it to them to tell them which coins he should use. So he still allowed him, he gave him control. He still allowed him to pay his own fare, but all he did was to provide some help and support for him. So, I'm a church pastor, too, so I'm used to speaking to the congregation, so I got to be careful. So that was really, that was really eye-opening when I saw that particular one. So there's a couple of sites. I just want to go over here with you. If we could go to the Community Toolkit, one more down. Okay. So, well, let's go to Resources. Resource, and Sector Videos. And scroll down just a little bit. Okay. So these, and you can explore this on your own, too. So Transportation, Library. What's a dementia-friendly library? What would a dementia-friendly library look like? Now, somebody that has dementia is not going to be able to go in and probably have a hard time alphabetical order trying to find the book. So a dementia-friendly librarian would be somebody that would maybe notice, recognize some of the signs and say, "Mrs. Jones," anybody Jones here? Okay, I always use Mrs. Jones. "Mrs. Jones, can I help you? Is there a particular book that you're looking for?" And maybe if it's a person in the community, they already know kind of what books she might like. And just because somebody has a diagnosis of dementia doesn't necessarily mean that they're still not reading. Some people are still reading. A dementia-friendly bank, how do they, a lot of times, people will know, they'll get a call from the bank that's to a child and say, "I just want to let you know that your mom has paid, has overdrawn her account." So a dementia-friendly bank would be aware and be able to work with the family to see of some alternatives. First responders, law enforcement. What's a dementia-friendly first responder? What's a dementia-friendly law enforcement? Because, you know, they're on the front lines. They're the ones that are getting the phone call at 3:00 in the morning saying that there's somebody in my house. Can you come get them out? So how, what is a dementia-friendly law enforcement? What does it look like? If they know that somebody is a wanderer, do they know how to do search and rescue? Knowing just a hint, the person will usually go in the direction of their dominant hand. So if they're going to go out the door, if they're right-handed, they're going to go right. If they're left-handed, they're probably going to go left. And that they will stop when they hit something. I don't mean literally, but I mean, well, yeah, both. But, you know, if they come to a fence, chances are they're going to stop. Dementia-friendly finding somebody. Do they know what their name is? You know, somebody that's 65 years old and has gone kind of back, and they call, "Mrs. Jones, Mrs. Jones, where are you?" Well, Mrs. Jones isn't going to answer because as far as she knows, her nickname was Pippa. So, you know, she's not going to respond to Mrs. Jones because she doesn't know who Mrs. Jones is. Scroll down just a little bit more, maybe. A church. What does a dementia-friendly church looks like? I know my church bulletin is full of stuff. That might be just a little bit too much that has dementia. So maybe we kind of, for those people in our faith community, maybe we make a bulletin that doesn't have quite so much stuff on it. So, a restaurant. What's a dementia-friendly restaurant look like? Well, maybe we have, Wednesday, we have a special senior citizens slap, you don't want to call it dementia day because that just sounds weird. But, but maybe we have a menu with just three items on it, with a picture, or four items, and just limit it because making choices is just a little bit too overwhelming for somebody with dementia. Laura, how much time do I have?
Do you know, Mayor?
Somebody, I don't have...
About three minutes? About three minutes?
Three more minutes?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay. All right. Boy, I got to talk fast. So dementia-friendly restaurant, just go up, scroll up a little bit more. I think that was the one I wanted to bring. Retail. So people with dementia know what they see, okay? So Mrs. Jones, God bless her soul, she sees a scarf, and she puts it on, and she walks out. Because they know what they see. She sees a pretty scarf, and it's like, "I like that scarf. I think I'll put it on." So a dementia-friendly retail person might say, instead of saying, "Hey, I'm going to call the cops. You took that." Well, she doesn't know. She doesn't realize that she took that. So a dementia-friendly retail person that's kind of been trained would be able to say, "Mrs. Jones, boy, that scarf looks absolutely gorgeous on you. It looks beautiful. How about if we come up and we'll pay for that? Here's the register right here." Okay? So, and then she'll be able to pay for it. She saves face. We don't make a big deal, and her poor daughter who just took her to the store can now see, can be in the community again. So, I guess what I'm looking for here is your blessing to go forward with making Newport a dementia-friendly community. You don't have to vote on it right now. You can talk about it, discuss it. I'm leaving, I'm going after my presentation. I've left some business cards here. So if you'd be interested in serving on a dementia, if we have the blessing, if you would like to serve on a committee that is, that's going to go towards making Newport dementia-friendly, take my card and send me an email. If you know, we'd also be looking for people that have like an early diagnosis because their input is absolutely crucial. So if we, we'd be looking for caregivers, and we would be looking for people that do exactly have a diagnosis. So I'm excited about this. I hope you're excited about this. People that have dementia just need respect. They need your caring. They need your love. And it's just, I just think it's an exciting process, and we're basically, there's a phase, and we're basically in Phase 1.
So, I'm a church pastor, too, so I'm used to speaking to the congregation, so I've got to be careful. So that was really, that was really eye-opening when I saw that particular one. So there's a couple of sites, I just want to go over here with you. If we could go to the community toolkit, one more down, okay. So, well, let's go to resources. Resource, and sector videos. And scroll down just a little bit, okay. So these, and you can explore this on your own, too. So, transportation, library, what's a dementia-friendly library? What would a dementia-friendly library look like? Now, somebody that has dementia is not going to be able to go in and probably have a hard time alphabetical order trying to find the book. So a dementia-friendly librarian would be somebody that would maybe notice, recognize some of the signs, and say, Mrs. Jones, anybody Jones here? Okay, I always use Mrs. Jones. Mrs. Jones, can I help you? Is there a particular book that you're looking for? And maybe if it's a person in the community, they already know kind of what books she might like. And just because somebody has a diagnosis of dementia, doesn't necessarily mean that they're still not reading. Some people are still reading. A dementia-friendly bank, how do they, a lot of times, people will know, they'll get a call from the bank that's to a child and say, I just want to let you know that your mom has paid, has overdrawn her account. So a dementia-friendly bank would be aware and be able to work with the family to see of some alternatives. First responders, law enforcement, what's a dementia-friendly first responder? What's a dementia-friendly law enforcement? Because, you know, they're on the front lines, they're the ones that are getting the phone call at 3:00 in the morning saying that there's somebody in my house, can you come get them out? So how, what is a dementia-friendly law enforcement? What does it look like? If they know that somebody is a wanderer, do they know how to do search and rescue? Knowing just a hint, the person will usually go in the direction of their dominant hand. So, so if they're going to go out the door, if they're right-handed, they're going to go right, if they're left-handed, they're probably going to go left. And that they will stop when they hit something. I don't mean literally, but I mean, well, yeah, both. But, you know, if they come to a fence, chances are they're going to stop. Dementia-friendly finding somebody, do they know what their name is? You know, somebody that's 65 years old and has gone kind of back, and they call, Mrs. Jones, Mrs. Jones, where are you? Well, Mrs. Jones isn't going to answer, because as far as she knows, her nickname was Pippa. So, you know, she's not going to respond to Mrs. Jones, because she doesn't know who Mrs. Jones is. Scroll down just a little bit more, maybe. A church, what does a dementia-friendly church looks like? I know my church bulletin is full of stuff, that might be just a little bit too much that has dementia. So maybe we kind of, for those people in our faith community, maybe we make a bulletin that doesn't have quite so much stuff on it. So, a restaurant, what's a dementia-friendly restaurant look like? Well, maybe we have, Wednesday, we have a special senior citizens slap, you don't want to call it dementia day, because that just sounds weird. But, but maybe we have a menu with just three items on it, with a picture, or four items, and just limited, because making choices is just a little bit too overwhelming for somebody with dementia. Laura, how much time do I have?
Do you know, Mayor?
Somebody, I don't know.
About three minutes? About three minutes?
Three more minutes?
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay, all right. Boy, I've got to talk fast. So dementia-friendly restaurant, just go up, scroll up a little bit more, I think that was the one I wanted to bring. Retail, so people with dementia know what they see, okay? So Mrs. Jones, God bless her soul, she sees a scarf, and she puts it on, and she walks out, because they know what they see, she sees a pretty scarf, and it's like, I like that scarf, I think I'll put it on. So a dementia-friendly retail person might say, instead of saying, hey, I'm going to call the cops, you took that, well, she doesn't know, she doesn't realize that she took that. So a dementia-friendly retail person that's kind of been trained would be able to say, Mrs. Jones, boy, that scarf looks absolutely gorgeous on you, it looks beautiful. How about if we come up and, and we'll pay for that, here's the register right here, okay? So, and then she'll be able to pay for it. She saves face, we don't make a big deal, and her poor daughter who just took her to the store can now see, can be in the community again. So, so I guess what I'm looking for here is your blessing, to go forward with making Newport a dementia-friendly community. You don't have to vote it on it right now, you can talk about it, discuss it. I'm leaving, I'm going after my presentation, I've left some business cards here, so if you'd be interested in serving on a dementia, if we have the blessing, if you would like to serve on a committee that is, that's going to go towards making Newport dementia-friendly, take my card and send me an email. If you know, we'd also be looking for people that have like an early diagnosis, because their input is absolutely crucial. So if we would be looking for caregivers, and we would be looking for people that do exactly have a diagnosis. So I'm excited about this, I hope you're excited about this. People that have dementia just need respect, they need your caring, they need your love, and it's just, I just think it's an exciting process, and we're basically, there's a phase, and we're basically in phase one, which is letting people know about it. And I think your blessing is crucial to, for the city council, because then the other thing I'm going to be looking for is speaking engagements, kind of like this, and hopefully I'll have longer than 15 to 20 minutes, because I could go on a little bit longer. But respectful of your time. So I'd be looking for, you know, rotaries, faith-based organizations, Chamber of Carmises, you know, hospitals, anybody that is saying, hey, we don't have a speaker for this month, give me a call, and I'd be happy to share a little bit more information for you. Quickly, any questions?
Yes, I was going to say, any questions from anybody on the council? I have a kind of curiosity, so dementia and Alzheimer's. You said they're like one of the same, but different?
You can use the same, there are some family members, it's like, I never want to know that I had a diagnosis of Alzheimer's, but if you say, you know what, you have dementia, then that's easily swallowed sometimes, it's like, I'm never getting Alzheimer's. So, but yeah, you can use them, it's just a symptom of many, many different diseases. There's Alzheimer's diseases, number one, there's vascular dementia, there's Lewy body dementia, some people have Parkinson's come down with, had some dementia, so it's, there's a lot of illnesses that cause dementia.
My reason for asking is that any of these, like the bank, pharmacy, retail, takes training to be able to work with folks.
It would.
Because I can tell you, I had an experience in a store where, in the department I was in, a gentleman who I knew had Alzheimer's, became very agitated every time we mentioned the daughter's name we had come in with. So we sat him down quietly, and we kind of did, we did a page over the PA system, so I quietly radioed, if you see so-and-so, and that worked that way, because we knew every time the daughter's name was mentioned, we'd get agitated.
Sure.
So I found a way around the help, and I made him quiet in the electronics department.
Yes, yeah.
So it takes.
It does take training, and the good thing about this website is there's, there's separate trainings for each one of those communities, there's a little, if you go on it by yourself, there's little videos for each one of those. It's not a training, but it kind of shows you some of the different instances that might come up in each one of those sectors.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. I appreciate you coming, any story?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if the city went along with this, is there anything that the city has to do, or do you do it? By the way, I communicate daily, do you do it?
So, my husband's a town selectman, and he said, you know what, the first thing they're going to ask is how much it's going to cost. And I don't have a dollar amount, but most of it is going to be, so a bank says, I do a training for banks, it's going to be staff time, there might be some printing costs, but most of it, most of the cost is going to be my staff time, and each one of those individuals, you know, if I do a law enforcement training, it's going to be their time, so it's going to be their staff time. So as far as money, money on the ground, it'll be very little, as far as I know, so, yeah.
Good, and I actually have an idea where you can speak, I'm sorry.
Rotary.
Perfect, perfect.
Rides with for guest speakers.
So I did leave some other information, dementia worldwide, boy, the figures are staggering. And in Vermont, somebody's diagnosed with a dementing illness every six seconds, so that's, that's high, that's high. And, and I guess I didn't say it before, I'm going to talk real fast, Laura, 10% of people over age 65 will have a diagnosis of Alzheimer's, and about 50% of people over 85 will have a diagnosis of some form of dementia. So Vermont is an old state, it's not going away, the most that we can do to support people that have a dementing illness, I think it's fantastic. So I look forward to hearing from you all.
Great, thanks very much.
All right, my card's there, feel free to take them.
Thank you, Piana.
Thank you. The next presentation is Christina Placet, from Bart Programs, do a presentation.
I'm not as dynamic of a speaker as she was, it's so forgiving. So my name's Christina, call me Tina, I'm the current director at Bart Programs in Newport, and I'm also the director of Bart in St. John's Church as well. Thank you for having me today. What I wanted to do was kind of give an overview of who we serve, kind of some of the things that we do in our program, and talk a little bit about some of the successes that come out of our program. So what I did was, I took some data from last year, to kind of give you an overview of who exactly we serve in your community. Back then, we had about 421 patients, and those are in the clinic, and those are people that come and get their medication every day, and get their counseling. And then we also have a program that's called a spoke, where patients will see a doctor, and they get a prescription for their medication, and so at that time, we had about 39 people in that program. Those are people that are doing well, that are stable, that have jobs, and they are, they need a less intensive level of care, that's what the spoke is. Of this 421, so average daily, we have about 260 people coming into our clinic throughout the day to get their medication. We start dispensing medication at 5:30 in the morning, we do that because a lot of our folks work, and need to come in and get their medication, and get off to work. We dispense until about 9:45, and we take an hour break, and then we start back up at 11:00, and dispense until 12:30 in the afternoon. So in that span of time, typically, we average about 260 people, so if you can imagine, flow is important, making sure that people come in, get their medication, and leave the parking lot is important. Sometimes when they come in for their medication, they have their counseling appointments, which would require them to stay longer, but really, we have security on staff that ensure that the flow keeps moving. It is a small parking lot, so that's essential to make sure that people keep moving, and that there's enough parking spaces. We do the best we can as far as not allowing people to spill out onto the street or park on the sidewalk, we do the best we can with the number of people that we have coming in. Safe goes for, I know smoking has been a concern on the premises, it is a no-smoking campus, and we, again, we do our best to ensure that folks aren't smoking while they're there. Typically, what we found is if we try to chase them out of our parking lot, they start walking, and then they, you know, may smoke at our neighbors' businesses and things like that, so we don't want that. So we do the best we can to ensure that they don't smoke on property, but we also don't want them taking a walk and walking down the street and standing in front of other businesses. You know, last year, and this is still the same for this year, roughly, we have the same amount of males and females that come to the clinic. If you look at the age ranges, we have about 19% that are under the age of 30, about 74% that are between the ages of 30 and 50, and then we have a very small population, about 7% of folks that are over 50. If you look, the biggest population is in that 30 to 50 range, and I think that kind of coincides with folks that are working age, that maybe got hurt at work, were prescribed opiates for pain, and then ended up addicted in one way or another. That's the largest population that we treat. We are seeing a surge in younger folks, and I don't have any official numbers on it, but I kind of attribute that to, you know, generations of poverty and addiction that just keep repeating, as families go throughout the system. You know, our retention rates, at that time, in 2018, folks that were there from 0 to 90 days were about 43 out of that 421. Then we had folks that would last 90 days to a year, that's 97%, or 90%, 97% of that 421. And then people that were in treatment one to two years, out of that 421, there were 69 folks. And then the largest chunk of our folks are folks that have been there two years or more, and at that time, it was about 255 of that 421. It's a maintenance treatment, so the longer people stay in treatment, the better that they, that they do. The next slide will kind of indicate that for you guys. So what I did was, I looked at some of the treatment outcomes that we had, and I know it's really small to see, but what I did was, is looked at, I compared people that are in treatment from three to six months, people that are in treatment from six to 12 months, and people that are in treatment for more than a year. And you can see, that first group is, obviously, when people are just new to treatment, they have a lot going on, they have a lot of needs, and so that's a small portion of them that were employed at that time. But if you look and see the people that have been in treatment over a year, 180 of them are employed. Same for the disabled population, and I think that rises, because what we do is we provide case management services, and get them the resources that they need, and so some of them apply for disability, and we help them go through that, and so then they're sustaining themselves, and they're incoming through disability. And then we also have an increase in folks who are homemakers. The next slide is. And then I wanted to just provide a little overview of what we do at the program. When someone comes in, they get a medical exam, and we take a history of their addiction history, their use, what brought them to us, and then we do, also do a clinical assessment, which they meet with a clinician, they kind of do a psychosocial assessment, which is involved in that, is just their whole life history, you know, do they have legal issues? What kind of case management do they need? Do they need help with housing? Do they need help with food? Things like that. Then we also screen for any kind of mental health issues that they may have, so that we can refer them to a mental health provider, to get that taken care of as well. Obviously, the thing that makes our program unique is that we provide medication to treat their addiction, and so that starts off with daily monitoring of medication, which is why we have so many people that come every single day, because they have to come every day until they are stable on their medication, and stable in their life. Once they're stable in their life, and they're working, and they're being productive, then they slowly earn what's called take-home medication, and they're allowed to maybe get their medication six days in the clinic, and then maybe one day, they get to take a dose home with them to medicate. And that's a process that takes a really long time. They have to be in treatment, they get one take-home for every 90 days in treatment. So it's, it's nothing that happens very quickly, and they can lose those take-homes if, you know, if things happen and they slip up, or they stop coming to counseling, things like that. So we monitor that very closely. We do random urine drug screens, and that is just to make sure that they're working the program in the way that they should, we're supportive in that, we don't expect people to start the medication one day, and the next day, not be using anymore. It's a long, recovery's a long process, and so we work through that with them. And the counseling is key, they are required to have counseling, they don't just come and get medication and go, they have to have counseling. And that can range anywhere from every week, every other week, typically, once a month only occurs for our folks that are stable, working, and don't need that level of counseling anymore, but typically, most folks are seen about every other week, and they have to work, because the medication only does so much, so they have to work in counseling to make sure that they're making changes, and they're getting their case management needs met, to be successful. Let's see, and then I already spoke about stability of dose, and other aspects in their life can lead to take-home medication privileges, so. That's all I have.
Okay. Questions? I guess I have a couple. You said you have 421 total?
That was in 2018, probably around 470 at this point.
Okay. What is the maximum that that location can take? Because, as we all know, I mean, I've had people call me complaining about the traffic, and, you know, smoking on other people's property, because you don't allow the smoking. I've had some of the neighbors, you know, not happy that they're smoking on their yard, leaving cigarette butts on their yard, but I'm just curious, so 470, you must be getting pretty close to maxing out that facility, I would think.
Well, I think what we're getting close to is maxing out the parking. The facility itself, we have plenty of office space, and as long as we have the staff to provide the services, then, you know, we're okay. So we are looking into other options for parking, so that things can't, the flow can be better, and it's not so congested in our small parking lot.
Then I guess the other question, when you do drug testing, is there a point in time where you say, okay, obviously, it's not working? Because if you keep testing positive, and you're taking the methadone, but you keep testing positive for illegal drug use, is there a point in time where you say, enough is enough? Because I know in the past, when the clinic first opened, that was kind of the situation where people were getting the methadone, and then if they tested positive after so many times, they, so I don't know, I'm just, because I hate to see people.
Yeah, I think it's a great question.
I hate to see people keep using, by using this as a approach, you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I get this question a lot. So, you know, the approach we take is, we try to meet people where they are. Obviously, when they continue to use substances, so there's a couple of things that are very dangerous to use with our medication, and those things are alcohol and benzodiazepines, which are things like Xanax, Klonopin. So if they continue to test positive for that, it may be a point where it's not, no longer safe for us to continue to give them our medication. And in that case, sometimes we do have a conversation with the folks of, it's either this or that, because we can't keep doing both. As far as other illicit substances, so our medication really combats the opiates. So, you know, if you think of your brain as having opiate receptors, what our medication does is fill those receptors, so that you don't crave, you're not in withdrawal, and it takes care of that. But it doesn't do anything for cocaine, or it doesn't do anything for marijuana use. So a lot of times, people are testing negative for opiates, the medication's doing its job, and we have to work on them changing their habits as far as if they're testing positive for cocaine. It's a very long process to change addictive choices and behaviors. So, you know, we work with them, the thing is, we're kind of the level of treatment, where if we don't help them, then they're in residential treatment, and that costs way more money, they don't get to stay as long. So that's why you've probably seen this trend, because the research has shown, the longer you keep people in treatment, the better they do, and the more long-term success they have. So sometimes it looks like, oh, they're still using, and they're going, they've been going to Bart for, you know, six months, but sometimes, for some folks, it takes several years before everything can work out, and they can truly be in recovery. I hope that answers your question.
Yep, and then I only have two more that I'll give you, I'll be quiet. So you just dispense methadone, or do you, I think you say, yeah.
Buprenorphine, we also dispense buprenorphine on a daily basis, yes. So the buprenorphine that we dispense is a film that they put under their tongue. They have to stay in our building until it's completely dissolved, before they're allowed to leave. So our security monitors them, our patients have to show our security their mouths before they leave, to make sure that it's completely gone.
And I didn't think I saw a number, what is the percent that can get completely off, say, methadone, and I can't even say that, buprenorphine, thank you. What is the percent that can, you do, do you track that? How many have actually gotten off that type of treatment, where they're, I recall, like 100%?
I don't have it in my head, I should probably learn to include that in my presentations. You know, like I said, it's more of a maintenance, so if you compare it to something like a mental illness, where someone is treated for depression, and has to take depression medication, they'll always have depression, taking the medication doesn't cure the depression, it helps with the symptoms, but for them to function and be well, they're always going to have to be on that depression medication. This is a lot like that. For some, I mean, this is a maintenance treatment, so it's a very big commitment when someone comes into our program, they're going to be there for a while. We do have some folks that are able to, you know, and it depends on how long they've used, what they've used, if they have any other complicating medical issues like pain, that really determines how long someone will be on our program, and like I said, for some folks, it's short-term, they use it just to kind of get things in order, and they get the counseling, and they're good, and then some folks, this is, this is the best that they're going to be.
Okay, I'm just, like, that's it?
No, it's a comment question, you used to that one.
You used to that one?
Yeah.
Any questions from council members?
Comment, but not a question. Most of you know that my day job, I work for the Department of Health in the Alcohol and Drug Use Programs Division, and that's the division that designed this hub-and-spoke model of care, and the whole country is clamoring to do it as well as we do it in Vermont. And a lot of people, I find in my daily work, are wondering, why do they stay so long at Bart? And one of the reasons not, that goes beyond needing long-term care, is that we don't have enough spokes in our community. We have one built-in at our. We have one built in at our hub and just a couple of little tiny ones here and there. One in Island Pond and one at Northeast Kingdom Human Services. And that creates a serious lack of health equity in our community. And we all need to put pressure on our system of care. In the medical primary care facilities, that's where these spokes need to be. And the whole issue of, is there a time limit? You know, should people have Suboxone for 18 months and then just be forced to kick them off? Like Tina said, it can be a lifelong process, but it's a medical decision between a patient and a doctor. And that's what I think is the biggest misconception in medication-assisted treatment is that it's not generic. It's not one size fits all. It's a doctor-patient relationship.
And not everyone's right for our program. You know, we screen them heavily when they come in and they request services because it is a big commitment. So we don't want to take someone in that may do well with just outpatient counseling. You know, we really make sure that our program is needed before we take them in.
I guess I, because the hub and spoke program, so if it's basically a maintenance program, it sounds like for the most part, what's the difference in getting your maintenance at BART or getting your maintenance at a medical facility? Why the push to get people other places?
So, so if they're on methadone, we're the only place that can dispense that for addiction. So if they're on methadone, they will have to stay with us. Buprenorphine is a medication that a primary care physician can prescribe with additional training. And they have to get a waiver in order to do that. The reason why we would want people to be in the community because it's a less restrictive level of care. You know, there's a lot of requirements in coming to our program. And so if someone's doing really well and they're working, you can imagine, you know, the barriers to having to come to the program every day and get your medication and having to earn those take homes. If someone's doing really well, they can go to their physician's office, get a prescription for two weeks or 30 days because they're doing that well. So it's less of a burden on the community and it's less of a burden on them. It allows them to go and live their life.
It sort of makes sense, but if part of the thing that helps people along and maybe they're successful because they're in this constant monitoring stuff and then you kind of lose, then who's going to look after them?
Well, and that's a great question because sometimes that does happen. Sometimes people are doing really well and we refer them out to a spoke and then they have some slips. The system is built for a constant flow back and forth if they need it. So people that are doing really well will refer out and folks that are out and have some issues come back to us to get stabilized. But you're right, a lot of folks do well because it is that daily monitoring, it is that constant structure for them. So, yeah, it really depends on the person.
Because anybody familiar with the healthcare system knows that primary care physicians, you know, in our area are overburdened as it is. So they don't particularly have the time and the, you know, to be doing the monitoring and the answering people.
So what they have developed is what's called a mat team. And that is a registered nurse and a licensed clinician who go into the doctors' offices and assist them with those patients. So they provide support, they meet with those patients, they let the doctor know how they're doing. So the state has thought about that.
Oh, so the state's paying for that?
So through the Blueprint for Health, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to hear how the program is funded.
So we receive state funds through ADAP. And then we also take Medicaid, we take private insurance. And we are also a company that funds it as well.
Mr. Mayor, I heard actually today, and I don't know how true it is, that there were some folks coming from out of town that come to this particular clinic. Is that true? Do you know a percentile and if that's not a lot?
A year ago, we did have a large number of people coming from Richford and St. Albans. But since then, the clinic has opened in St. Albans. So we no longer have those folks having to be on a bus five to six hours a day to get treatment.
Are they allowed to choose where they go or do they have to go to their nearest clinic?
They're allowed to choose where they go, but obviously, we steer people to go to whichever clinic is closest to them because A, they need to come every day, so they have to be able to get to us every day. Medicaid-funded rides, like through RCT or GMDA, kind of dictates where they have to, they have to go to the closest clinic to get reimbursed for those Medicaid rides.
I can at least give you one last question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Can the folks on these medications, for lack of a better word, are they able to function? Can they, are they allowed to drive a vehicle?
Yes.
So they can go to work at a construction job and safely do the job?
Yes. As long as they're, they work with us and they're medicating every day and they're on a stable dose of medication, they should look like you and I.
So they can go drive an excavator or whatever?
Yeah. There are some limits to CDL licenses with people on methadone. So what we'll have is a lot of times if our patients want to pursue a career and get their CDL license, we'll help them. We'll facilitate them transferring to buprenorphine, which they can have a CDL license and be on our medication.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else? Well, thank you for giving us an update.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Christina. Please, thank you. Thank you, Karen.
We do not need the executive session, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so skip over that. Next, we'll move on to the assessor appointment and vote. Can I have a senior manager?
Sure. Spencer's last day as assessor will be the last Thursday of this month. And we're going through transition right now. We've got a training program outlined for his replacement and I'd like to introduce his replacement tonight. Mr. Rob Narromore. We've interviewed Rob and his references came back stellar.
Did you have a good chair up?
You can sit right here if you'd like to.
Oh, great.
And Rob has started the transition with Spencer this last week. When we got into it, we realized that we should ask the council, should they see fit to appoint Rob effective tonight so that they can share information and we can start our representation with the Vision and the Nemerk program. So training is going well. We have a training plan with the Nemerk experts that'll be coming here and spending a couple of days with Rob. We also have Vision lined up. So the two primary programs that will teach Rob how to be an assessor are prepared. Rob's going to have an uphill climb learning this. So we do have a plan in place for any situation that requires a grievance or appeal to have resources from Nemerk who will come in and assist Rob while he's tackling those. It's a good time of year to do the transition. The grievances from the reappraisal are slowing down. And it's a quiet time right up till about July 1st. Then it's going to pick up for Nemerk and then it's going to quiet down for us a little bit. So we've got a tight training plan in place. Tomorrow, we'll begin a meeting with our IT person. And then as early as next week, we've got training going on with Nemerk coming here. So it's a nice, tight program. And like I said, there will be a learning curve for Rob. So that's something to stress to the council members. And one of Rob's messages that he gave us during his interview is how important customer service is to him. And we were very impressed with that. So that was one of his wooing points when we did the recruitment. And unless the council has any questions, happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Then we will need a motion to appoint Rob Narromore as our new assessor.
I'll make that motion.
Motion raised, is there a second? Rained and seconded, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, okay.
You can go.
I didn't say work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You will be exceptional.
Okay, the next item is the mooring field boundary update and proposed ordinance amendment vote. We have Jessica from the Rec Department. We also have our harbor master.
Yeah, so you guys haven't had a chance to meet Eric. Yeah, this is his first council meeting, so Eric Opel, our new harbor master. He's been with us since, what, a couple of months now?
A little over a month.
It's only been summer for a day.
Right.
It's only been summer for a day.
So mooring fields, they're kind of complex if you don't know anything about them, as I did not. We started going through all of this. We have a pretty lengthy ordinance, you guys saw when I emailed to you, that guides most of the principles that we use for ordinances. I wanted to kind of walk you through this a little bit. So for the Newport City Dock, we have two sets of clients. We have our dock slip holders, which are the people that are right around the pier and the main dock. And then we have our mooring fields out in the water, which are the people that have the buoys with the anchors out in their mooring station. So we're going to kind of go through this a little bit. There's some boundary adjustments that we need to make. As it seems like everything I dig might be into, I find that there could be improvements made on things. So the memo that you guys have talks about the mooring management fields that we have. So we started about a year and a half ago digging in and trying to figure out what was out in the lake. There was a lot of abandoned equipment out there, things that had been registered many years ago. But people hadn't maintained their registrations, maybe weren't even using anymore. Maybe didn't even have the buoy floating at the top, they were sunk down to the bottom of the lake. So trying to clean up our mooring fields and figure out exactly what's out there, who owns it and whose boats they are. So today, what we're looking for is clarification on the mooring boundaries. So if you click on image number one and just a little click, you can see this is an image of a map that shows the Newport City Dock area, which is right here. This tiny little thing up here that sticks out there. These are mooring management zones A, B, and C. You can see there's lots of other letters. The city has authority through the harbor master to inspect any moorings that are in these areas. But people don't have to register with us on a regular basis for those. The areas that are, our main concern is A, B, and C are where people have to register on an annual basis to have a special station there. So if you'll just hit the arrow over button to the next image, you can see here, mooring management zones A, B, and C are broken down into what we call the stations. So those circles represent the swing area of a boat. It's built for a maximum of 65-foot boat in each one of those swing areas. Some of the boats are only 20 feet. Some of them are 65, or 35 feet rather, is the maximum size. So those are all the mooring stations that we have available. This diagram right here shows the number of people that are actually occupied, the number of stations that are occupied for 2019, so this summer. These are people that we've received registrations from and have them on our radar. We did pull out this last fall about 12 abandoned pieces of mooring tackle that were occupying these other stations. We cleaned those out, got those out there, which allows us to put new boats in there. So you can see the shapes of those. In the mooring ordinance, it dictates the boundary zones, the lines around the outside of those shapes in three different ways. First, by coordinates, GPS coordinates that actually give us that stuff, or, you know, the actual physical GPS points. There's what's called the intent. So you can see like 300 feet off the railroad. And then there's an actual map, which was the previous slide that we showed. So when we went to start cleaning up the mooring fields, we hired a contractor to do that and actually clean these points for us and give us a nice document that showed us what was in the fields. His first order of business was to take what we had in our ordinance and see, okay, what am I working with here? So if you'll click to the next slide. The first thing he did was take that big map and overlay it on top of a satellite image. You can see if you click to the next slide, at that point, things were in pretty good shape. You can see that the boundary lines of the map, whoever created this map for us did a pretty good job. So he was able to overlay it and not really have a lot of discrepancy. But if you look closer, you'll see all these little white dots here, those are our boats. So you can see a cluster of them kind of focuses over here, which means they're a little bit outside of A according to this map image. You can see that there's a couple of boats in C. C's pretty much fine, D's pretty much fine. But A, which is our area where we have most of our clients, is a little bit skewed. So that is the map, according to the map boundary. So if you'll click to the next slide, the red lines that you see here are the GPS coordinates that are in the ordinance. So according to that, our boats are pretty far out of the boundary zones here and they don't match up with the map that's in there. Click on to the next slide. This shows according to the intent. The yellow lines are according to the intent. This is what the boundaries are. So you can see, especially in this area here, the boats are within the intent boundary, but not within the other boundaries. So there's a little bit of discrepancy here. So our mooring guy was like, I'm happy to put these boats back on station for you, but I need to know exactly where you want them. Which one of these do you want? So I said, well, what do you think, being the expert? So if you look at the next slide, this was his recommendation. He said, well, if you're going to go into the ordinance and you're going to make an adjustment anyway, I would suggest a couple of things. First of all, if you think that there's going to be expansion in the future, I would go ahead and pull these mooring boundaries up and square them off. And he said, there's a couple of reasons for doing that. Number one, gives you more capacity in the future if your mooring field should grow. Number two, by squaring them off and reshaping them a little bit, it allows you to have neat rows and columns of boats as opposed to clustering them in kind of randomly like this, which helps with not only the aesthetic look out on the lake, but allows boaters to find like, okay, I know I'm the third one over and call them whatever. So it helps with that a little bit. So I took this information, what I've just presented to you guys, and brought it to the harbor commission, went through it with them. And they said, yeah, we like the suggestion of squaring them off, but we don't think that we need a lot of extra room yet. Our mooring fields at this point are still not in super high demand. So we think that instead of creating congestion up here, which is, this is the throughway obviously to get to the dock, we'd rather kind of cap these off here and then allow more space for that fairway there for the boats to get in and out without having a kind of bottleneck area up here. So we're losing this top point here, but we're gaining this area kind of here. So it's about, it's pretty much a wash, about the same amount of space. So that's the recommendation from the harbor commission and myself would be to allow the mooring contractor to plot the GPS coordinates that go along with these shapes and use that as the new definition for our boundary lines in the ordinance. If the council approves and we move forward in that direction, we'll bring this next to the Vermont DEC.
It's got to wait. It's an ordinance, so it's got 44 days from the time that we approve it to the time that it gets.
For public appeal or?
Appeal, then I think you've got to wait until that's done before you can go to the state. Right? I understand the way the ordinances work.
Okay.
Just a comment, we didn't do too bad when we created this.
No, not bad.
We have to admit, we didn't have all this technology back then.
Yes, and that's what our contractor said, that it's a problem, the likeliness of the discrepancies is because the technology has just come so much further since.
We didn't have a lot of satellites.
Yeah, so the bottom line is just trying to figure out exactly what we're working with so that we can then adjust our boats.
No, I think it's a good recommendation.
So that's the mooring boundaries. But before we make a motion to change the ordinance or work on, you know, moving forward there, I did also have a couple of other recommendations for the ordinance since we were going to be in there and making adjustments anyway. There was a couple of small items, other mooring, fees for mooring deposits. So the mooring ordinance says that fees for moorings, the total fees, are determined by the council on a yearly basis. It's oddly specific about the deposit that we require every year and says $10, which may have been an appropriate amount, what, 20 years ago when this was put into place? But $10 at this point doesn't match up with the other, usually we owe 25% when we do deposits. So my suggestion in here was just to reword that sentence to say that council also would approve the rate on a yearly basis. So leave that up to your discretion and not remove that on this issue. So that was one of them. And then the other one, in the mooring ordinance, it says that anyone who does not moor a vessel onto their mooring within a one-year term of having that station, a certificate for that station, means that that mooring is abandoned and that they don't get to have it for next year. During times when our mooring fields have like a waitlist or something like that, if that ever happens, I think that would be useful to make sure that there's public, ensures that there's equal public access for people. And obviously, someone paying for mooring and not using it, it's not a good use of it. But because we've never had that type of high demand, we do have slip holders that maintain a mooring but don't put a boat on it. They just have that there in case of bad weather or in case they have guests or things like that. But that equipment is privately owned out there. It costs a lot of money to move it. So not requiring them to put a boat on there, I think would be a fair thing at this point.
Yeah, I kind of agree. If we were full up, then I'd.
Then it'd be one thing.
I know a boater this year, they didn't put a boat in on their mooring because they decided to go camping in Alaska.
Yeah.
So it'll take them like a year off.
Yeah.
I would hate to see them, since it's not overly booked right now, to be penalized in that case.
And as long as they're maintaining that equipment out there and they're registering it on a yearly basis so we know whose it is, I think that that would be fine to not require them to put a boat on it.
But I, do I understand that it's their mooring, I mean, they purchase it, they, yeah.
And maintain and have to have it inspected.
And the equipment is not cheap.
No, it's not. It's not cheap to have it moved or fixed or anything. So we want to try moving it as infrequently. So we wanna try moving it as infrequently as possible.
So my ignorant son, is this not something you just probably decide, you know, transmission or something?
Real harbor master's real stickler about where people put their moorings.
And they're not, and those anchors are very, they weigh like, I don't know, two-hundred-and-fifty pounds at least, some of them?
Well, it depends on the size of the boat.
Right, right.
Usually two-hundred-and-fifteen for something that's twenty to twenty-five foot, anything above that. You're looking at a four-hundred pound, and we have a couple boats that are even bigger than that. And my recommendation is the block, not the anchor.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah. Questions from anyone on the council? And I would recommend we make a motion to approve the boundary changes and the amendments to the ordinance. Motion made by Mr. Ross, is there a second? Second, Mr. Sharpe, no? Any discussion on this? And hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Moore, is there an extra coffee or somebody willing to give up, case of no coffee?
I have the memo, you can have mine.
Want a little white reading, Morgan?
It's on the web, isn't it?
The existing one, yeah, and I think the proposal was put up on the website too.
Yes. The full mooring, A, I don't know, full mooring, I can't remember.
Okay, moving on. The next item will be large events and waive B requests and votes. And we do have one that we're adding, it'll be for the NC issue on there. So we'll have that as number D. I forgot to mention at the very beginning of the meeting, but it'll fit right in as D. So the first one is United Christian Academy Block Party Large Event Request.
Yep, so you can see here that they're not requesting anything of the city with the exception of permission to host the event because it does meet that one-hundred-person threshold, they're expecting three-hundred or more people. This was an event that they hosted, it's a celebration for their school, it's their twenty-fifth anniversary this year. And they did this, something similar a couple years ago, where they walked off the end portion of school street and had, you know, bouncers and games and stuff like that for the students and invited the community to come down. So they're looking at doing that again and just asking permission to host the event.
I gotta chuckle at the security plan. Chief DeSanto is likely to be in attendance for most of the event.
I take it you've been volunteering, chief?
I volunteer, apparently.
Any questions on this one?
I guess how many residences are on our school street? Are they talking to neighbors about getting two in front of the house?
They do, they did a couple of years ago, that was one of the things that we spoke with them about for this. And they're always very good going door-to-door and making sure that it's okay. And obviously if anyone misses the in and out, they let them, but they didn't have an issue a couple of years ago.
What emergency can get through?
Other questions, will you see any requests?
More of a general question. If this event were asking permission to be on a street that was not at that end, what would be the difference in the application?
Well, these get reviewed by the police department, the fire department, for all those types of concerns. I'm not sure, I guess we've never had anyone that, I would say it would be less likely to happen because if it's infringing on traffic, then that's something different, we have to validate that on a kind of a case-by-case basis.
Well, we did close Summer.
The Centennial.
Well, no, not that, but another event came in, there was a block party held on Summer Street, and I believe we closed that street down. And it was coordinated with the police department and the fire chief at the time. Can't remember who asked for that, but they did have a block party there and they closed Summer Street down.
I would assume as long as there's way for residents to get around.
Other questions on the UCA application for the large event? We've voted on each one separately, so I would entertain a motion for the UCA request.
Seven.
Motion made, is there a second to approve their request?
Second.
Main seconded, discussion on that? And hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. The next one is the NEK Stand Strong Opioid Overdose Awareness Block Request.
Yep, so this is a third annual event, they closed this for the past two years in the farmer's market areas, kind of where they host their rally. And then they take the bike path through Newport to just spread awareness on their cause, which is opioid overdose and awareness. They were requesting wage fees and a total amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. We haven't seen a deposit come through, typically we get a deposit for any sort of application, I just haven't received a check yet. I don't know if they're planning on sending that or not. I was having trouble getting a response from these guys for the last couple of weeks. So I went ahead and put them on so that we could approve their event, but.
Is there more work for you to do, work for them to do before the event happens?
Well, I'm assuming that, so the way we left it with this was great bachelor application. If you're looking to request waived fees, you'll need to submit a letter for that. Never got the letter, so wrote again and tried to call a few times, left messages, didn't get a response back. Said, okay, assuming since I got no letter, I'm gonna go ahead and put this event on so you can at least get it approved. I'm assuming that you're gonna pay the two-twenty-three because you haven't requested not to do that. So you can see on your mail here that they're, I'm assuming planning on making that contribution because I haven't heard otherwise. In the past, they have requested paid fees.
So does that mean the council could approve this contingent upon receiving that?
Yeah, so our policy for anything that's hosted at any venues is that people must pay before they play. So that's our policy for all programs or facilities or anything. So they would have to settle up this balance before they can have their event.
Questions from council members? Then I would entertain a motion that we approve the request for the event contingent upon payment of the fee. Some, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion on that? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. The next one is the North Country Chamber Aquafest Parade. The applicant was Bruce James, the anticipated attendance was a thousand. And they have requested that we approve the event, the parade, and also waive the nine-hundred-and-forty-two-dollar fee.
Wait, I did receive a check in the mail today for twenty-five dollars, so it's an affair deposit. So that fee is actually nine-seventeen? You'll also notice on the backside of this application that we requested the city provide trash and recycling pickup. So during the course of working through this application, I suggested that they consider the amount of trash that's typically left behind from a parade, whether it's because everyone's got their Dunkin' Donuts coffees or candy wrappers or stuff like that. For the Centennial Parade, we had an actual float, or a float or an entry at the end of the parade that was probation and parole that went with recycling bags and stuff and encouraged people to drop their stuff, which was actually very helpful and worked really well for the parade. So I suggested that maybe the chamber looking to doing something similar, just to help with the amount of trash that's left over. And they are requesting here that the city handles that, the extra trash that would be found on the street. So as Public Works, we've talked about this before, the receptacles that are on Main Street are suitable for everyday passing traffic, not necessarily for an event-type thing. We certainly can put out extra trash bags, but I would suggest, and I have suggested that the chamber maybe try to find someone that can be that last full of the parade, that seems to be really effective.
Is the amount of that included in the nine-seventeen?
We don't have a rate for that type of work, so we have to kind of figure that out.
Yeah, we do, you can't let that go.
If that's something that we have.
So that would require Public Works going out after the parade.
Picking up all the bags. We do have receptacles that we could put off.
And for the Centennial, excuse me, we used probation and parole? Is that a possibility for this one?
I think they could do that, I think probation and parole probably would do that.
Maybe that's something that could be recommended. I'm just worried about that because we don't have a fee attached to that, but that's on a weekend, that's gonna be time to have for I don't know how many staffs. So that's something we really need to incorporate in our numbers, because that's a big expense.
Well, especially given that it's on Aquafest weekend and we're gonna have such a larger population in town, we really wanna make sure that the streets are looking clean. Otherwise, then we have a street dance following that event in the evening. So making sure that that logistical thing is taken care of is important.
Yeah, that has to be included in the amount of requests. Do we know, I'm sorry, do we know if they contacted and coordinated with EMS, emergency services?
I don't know, I don't.
Yeah, for sure.
The other thing that caught my eye on here was food services. Food trucks on Main Street was something that they had on here. I suggested that they, if they're going to do food trucks, so part of hosting these events in town is to put people into the businesses and the restaurants, right? We don't wanna offer them food and then take that away from our businesses. So my suggestion was if you're going to do food trucks, not to have them on Main Street, to at least put them either down by the farmer's market area or in the state building parking lot, at least so they're not like right in front of the businesses. And I also think that would be conducive to the street dance. Like we don't, in that area where we're gonna have the street dance, we don't want a bunch of food trucks in there. We wanna keep that, so we're gonna be open for that purpose. So it does say on Main Street specifically in here, I would be inclined to suggest that that should not be on Main Street, if they wanna do food trucks, do it.
Again, that's what we did with the Centennial, we got permission to put them in the state office parking lot. We only had a couple.
Yeah.
But it worked out pretty well. I mean, that was like the designated area, people didn't wanna go to the restaurant, so that was good learning for us.
We have no idea how big the parade is.
We don't, at this point, they're just getting the parade registrations out. I think they just went out at the end of last week. But they do know that the big costume people that came to the Centennial will be back, which is great. It's gonna be some African drummers. I think it's gonna be a pretty robust parade, certainly bigger than like the Memorial Day Parade, but not as big as the Centennial, we don't think. So my suggestion was, and the reason why they're starting at Gardner Park, which you'll see that fee on their invoice too, is, you know, obviously going from the gateway, there's not a lot of space for lineup. So I suggested they reverse the parade route, start in Gardner Park where they have more room to line up a substantial number of floats. And then once they head in this direction, anyone that's on foot can end down at the gateway, but everyone else can kind of dissipate and drive off into the roads.
It's a weekend event, yeah?
Saturday.
It's Saturday. Is it a city event?
The recreation committee and the rec department are hosting the street dance that follows, but it's not a recreation, the parade is not.
No way if food trucks or vendors involved in a city event.
Right.
Feet are waived, but otherwise they're supposed to get an permit.
Yeah, no, they won't, they aren't going to, that's a portion of the budget.
They need to apply for vendor's program for that weekend. Unless council decides not to do that, that's the way it's done.
Right, you have to, right, I have to go through your.
I'll make a motion to waive the nine-hundred-and-seventeen dollars in fees.
Do you have a suggestion on the food truck and or garbage stuff too? Or do you want me to just take care of that?
Oh, we have a motion, let's have a second before we continue discussion. If anyone choose to second the motion, which was to waive the fees.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion today, seconded to waive the fees, and then we continue the discussion. The question was to.
Do you want to address those two things on the application?
Well, personally, I think food trucks shouldn't be competing with the local businesses when you try to bring events in to help support the restaurants, you know, help support the downtown.
I understand that, but people with kids and stuff sometimes would rather either the food truck is a little cheaper than going to a restaurant. So I think our alternative is to be, is that Jess can possibly talk more about where we could locate the food trucks, whether it's in the municipal parking lot or somewhere that's not directly in front of somebody's face that's trying to make a living.
I think the state building, as Laura suggested, is the best option.
Well, that's an alternative, yeah. As far as the recycling, that's an unknown cost, and I really think, I really, if you bring Public Works in at time and a half on a Saturday, you know, I wish Bruce, in a way, had been here, the more I think about it, because some of the questions I would have asked is, did you budget for any of this? Or did you just assume the city was waiving the fees? You know, anybody who organizes an event in the city should have an income and expense and really, you know, determine if they're gonna budget for something like this, not knowing if the fees are gonna be waived. Because what happens if by chance the fees weren't waived? You know, that's just my own, you know, accounting background and asking income and expense and things like that. When you organize an event, you plan a budget. And so that was just something that, I don't know, I'm just concerned because Tom, Tom's got his hand up, but if you bring a crew in on the weekend, you're gonna pay them time and a half, correct?
Absolutely, and I just wanna throw it out there, it is July, and I know I can speak for myself because I will not be here then, I'm going on vacation. Where do I get to a point where I force some of my crew to work during the summer months? I mean, most of the guys wanna take vacations or take weekends and work. Tying up four or five guys to do like that.
Why can't you just use rec staff, like your summer helpers? Seems like it'd be a.
I do have a real problem, you know, attacking his idea of cleaning up trash because we're gonna have a street dance after, who's gonna clean up their trash? You know, it's one or the other, you know? Everybody is coming, whether it's for the parade or for the dance afters, have to throw things away, you know? So I think part of it is, we'd have to look at, what are we gonna provide for cleanup for the dance? So I can't think we can just look tunnel vision and say, well, gee, he's gonna have to clean up because we're gonna have to clean up too.
The rec committee has planned for those portions with their volunteers and their staff, so they have considered that and have planned for that. So I think that's what we're kind of addressing here, is does the city have a plan if the city can't be?
I don't know, I think the parade is a very big add-on to the Aquafest. It's not something that, and I think it's just as important as some of the other events that were on all that day and that weekend.
So you still don't have a guarantee that you have Public Works staff? And I do, I do wish we had Bruce here to address what his cleanup plan is. So that part kind of puts the council on a sticky wicket. You've got, I mean, even if you could get Public Works together, you've got time to have, plus you have your fees, I assume, for the waste.
Again, why the need for Public Works when there are rec staff that are a lot cheaper?
Because this isn't a rec, the parade part is not a rec event, that's the chamber event. So usually, part of the events is that they have a cleanup plan. And it doesn't usually involve using city resources to do that, so it is a conundrum.
If we were just staffed, we will be on-site for other things and we could come up with a total of what that additional time would cost. You know, obviously, being that that wasn't one of the duties that we were planning on, but we certainly are available, we have waste receptacles, we do that for hurricanes, but.
You're still gonna have that expense that needs to be accounted for after all you've asked.
Okay, we have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have another question. So when you talk to Bruce about the trucks, he'll have to be advised that he needs to, because who owns the parking lot? Is it the state or is it?
BGS.
So he's gonna have to talk to BGS.
He wants to go through them for a permit for that piece. But I think the recommendation here, at least from my perspective, is not to have them on Main Street. And then for the waste receptacle, take us back to Chili Fest where this was not a planned portion. At the end of Chili Fest, there sat, I remember, three or four bags of chili cups and trash on the street. And I did get in touch with the chamber and said, hey, can you guys get that off the street for the Chili Fest? That was kind of your deal. And more, not that we certainly couldn't grab it in T V, but I think it's important for them to be prepared for that. And so he said, well, where should I put it? Do you have a dumpster? And I said, well, the chamber does have a dumpster, I think you could throw it in. And so, you know, if we, to address the trash piece, you know, the chamber does have a dumpster there, we have receptacles, it's just making a plan for that. And I think encouraging them to put something in the flow at the end would alleviate a lot of that trash that we're gonna have to pick up afterwards and lighten the load a little bit.
It's a great idea.
It can fit for them to.
So they can have some of their members at the end of the parade pulling bags of other trash receptacles.
Well, no, not pulling them out, you're literally walking through the parade as a. And I saw the Boy Scouts do it in Waterbury, that's the idea. And I saw the Boy Scouts do it in Waterbury. That's the idea, being for the Centennial. But just as a community cleanup, you know, we'll take your recycling, we'll take your trash, and everyone runs up to drop this.
So everybody is sitting on the curb or standing up there, sort of. I see nothing wrong with that. And I think they would do it. I don't think they'd walk at that.
Or find someone that might be interested in it.
They got enough members to do that.
It worked for Rocky and Bollington, who brought their fairy tales in their parades.
I mean, it's whole group.
All right, we have a motion and a second to waive the fees.
To waive the $917.
The $917 fee. But before we go to the vote, could you remind him that any food vendor he gets will need a permit from Jim Johnson's office? That's required of any vendor in the city, not just Aquafest. If I wanted to set up a hot dog stand and run it over the summer, you'd have to have a permit to do it. So he'll need to have his vendors go to Jim's office.
You can get a weekend permit.
A weekend, it's a weekend permit.
Each vendor, that. Not a blanket deal.
Yeah, I'll send him that.
And he needs to talk to BGS. That's his responsibility.
Okay. Anything else? Then all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, is there a copy of the flyer? Can you get me a copy, Jeff?
There's no flyer, you mean for the event?
Yeah, just the dates and...
Yes, I can. So what's the date?
Saturday, July 27th, 2019. It's Aquafest weekend. And we, on our website too, if you're curious about the event, if you wanna see all the cool stuff that's going on, becarerecreation.org/aquafest.
Okay, the next item is North Country Supervisor Union Encore.
Yeah, this one didn't make it on the memo, because I went to pull my files out of my little slot there and found this one stuck on the bottom, so I didn't make it out on the memo. But the good news is that this is all self-contained. They did jade the $223 for field use, so this is really just a request to have 260 people in attendance at Gardner Park for a large event. So the date is Friday, July 12th. This is, it looks like the end of your celebration.
So we just need a motion to approve this event?
Yeah.
So moved?
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, moving on. New business. What I have could understandably be under old business too, but it's something that I've been thinking about. And I know I was asked why we haven't had the event policy back on the agenda. So I wrote my thoughts down. The current model of events approval and policies, in my opinion, are no longer sustainable. We tried in earnest for over a year to have an events approval process that was fair, reasonable, and easy to use. The policy recognizes the value and vitality that events bring to the city. I don't wanna lose sight of the benefits of events, but I don't wanna forget. I do, no, but I do wanna reframe our process to reflect what other municipalities successfully do through a permit process. Since April of 2018, the majority of users have experienced a robust, successful, and safe event as a result of our policy. A few users have expressed complaints that the policy is tedious. At a current pattern of approving all of the events that have come before us, it is not sustainable financially, and we are setting ourselves up to judge events. As soon as we say no, we are likely to be challenged. We cannot let this take over our goodwill. We raise controversy every time we judge an event. And I would remind us here tonight that we represent 3,635 voters and approximately 2,000 taxpayers that we mail onto new board residents. We must treat everyone fairly and equally. We need a clear process so that the event organizer knows what is expected. We must wean every event organizers away from the expectations that the taxpayers will subsidize or fund events. The amount to be raised by the taxpayers for events, recreational opportunities, facilities, maintenance, and programming is already $579,000 to our Ruck Department's budget. As mayor and per the charter, I have a responsibility to use my best efforts to see that the finances of the city are properly expended. We must work moving towards a permit process with the council. At this time, I'm asking that two members step forward and work with the city manager and parks and rec director to come up with a permit process similar to Montpelier's event street closure permit. Montpelier's is very successful. I've read through that thing about probably about 10 times. It's a permit process. It is not perceived as anti-event. And I can tell you right now that from talking with people in Montpelier, they don't even budget for events and they don't put it in their budget. They expect the event organizer to pay for the event. And my goal would like to see a proposal by mid to late July. This is a perfect time to transition and begin a fresh start, because we're beginning a new fiscal year. In my opinion, the permit process will be, will provide clarity, be simpler, and ensure that accountability, a community's safety and security plan, and a cleanup plan are all in place with each event. And I'm looking for a couple members. The reason why I'm doing this now is I've studied that event policy. It's controversial every time we have an event at this table. I think a permit, everybody I've looked at pretty much has permit processes, and it takes out any judgment, because the first time we say no to somebody or there's a controversial event, I'm thinking, there's a case in Boston right now where they're talking about denying an event because it's controversial, but the organizer's already threatened to go to court, you know? And it's things like that. I think we need to take out the judgment at this table and make it a permit process. It works well in many communities. I even found in some communities in Vermont, who have numerous successful events, they don't even have a permit. It's an ordinance. And if you don't follow the ordinance, and, you know, to the T, you can be fined. And so I think we need to convert the policy into a permit process. It will solve it. It will make it black and white, and I think that's what we need to do to move forward. Something I've been thinking for quite a while on, and that's why you haven't seen it on the agenda, because I've been trying to, in my own mind, figure out how we can solve this once and for all. It's just been, you know, with all my research from, and I really do, I have to admit, I do like Montpelier's policy, because it's cut and dry. I mean, they got a whole document that clearly, they give it to the organizer. It clearly states everything. They have a permit process. So it's just something that I've been, I hate to say it, probably festering on for the last few weeks. That's why you haven't seen it back on the agenda. And it's just something I think, I'd like to see two members work with the city manager and the rec director to come up with something once and for all. And I'd rather see it a permit process, so that it doesn't have to come to this table every time.
So permit process would be, whatever the criteria is, whatever the committee, whatever develops, it would be a permit process that goes through more of the department heads and things that needs criteria. This is what we expect. Yes, you need that. It's done. It's not coming here saying, oh, I want, and we think it's a good one, or that one's not so good. So it's taking the judgment out, so that as a council, there's not passive judgment on events, saying that your event's really great, but, oh, we haven't heard from you before, and we don't like that one, so no, you're a no. So it takes that judgmental thing out of it.
That's the way I perceive it. It's just something that, you know, after seeing the events tonight, that's why I decided to bring it up when I saw the agenda and they were asking about it. I just think it's something that we need to do, because we haven't had anyone come yet, like it's a knock on wood, that has been controversial. But just for grins, say that you get some real controversial group that comes in that is apparent to everybody, but they said, well, you waived fees for them. You've rid every single one. You waived every fee. But boy, you have 3,600 to 4,000 residents who get up in arms. You know, it's, I think it just clearly would define a process. And that's what I look at, is a permit process, I think. Based upon my research from other communities, you know, I think Montpelier was the biggest one I looked at. And then when I found Stowe had ordinances, you know, and even Montpelier's policy, or, well, they call it permit, permit, whatever, they can come in the day of the event and if they don't like it, they can shut it down, and same as Stowe. And, but the thing is, they've got, what gets me the most too is, Montpelier, Stowe, and other communities have all these permits and policies and all this stuff, and they're not being perceived as anti-event. Montpelier's is even stricter than us. And for some reason, people seem to wanna make Newport appear as anti-event when we're not. And that's what struck me the most from doing my research with all these other communities. None of them are being perceived as anti-event or anti-business. But for some reason, in Newport, because we question things and do things, we're being perceived as anti-event.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't think that overall Newport is being perceived as anti-business. I think it's a smaller faction that believes that. But that being aside, I think that if we, if we, again, there's a, a permit process is developed with input from, you know, the committee, that, again, that takes care of the things that I think for me, I have three things that I feel concerned about. One, it's the, it's the emergency services, it's fire, it's those types of things. If you're gonna have a bunch of people around, you know, this is a great picture you brought in. Unfortunately, this is not where we're living anymore, but it's a great picture of all these people jammed up in the street.
To see some bicycle activity.
Yeah, to see a bicycle act, but you're not gonna, you know, they didn't have an ambulance to try to come through there at that time.
They have active shooters.
They have active shooters. So, but this is the spirit we want. We want it safe. We want it safe for the participants. We want it safe for the rest of the citizens who are not participating. If someone's not going to be at the event, they still have a, they still have an expectation to be able to maneuver through town, to be able to receive the services that they need. And I think in reflection, again, of changing times, going through a permit process that is non-judgmental, that there is predetermined criteria, the things that we talked about tonight, you know, emergency trash, things like that, so that you meet the criteria, have your event. And I, and I personally, you know, as I, you know, do my taxes and stuff, I, events are great and they're wonderful, but I don't think it's the obligation of the Newport City Council to say, yes, we're gonna use taxpayers' money to fund a particular event, because at then, what point do you say, well, yes, we'll fund yours, and no, we won't fund yours? And then if we follow the history that the council has had, we just keep waiving and waiving and waiving and waiving, we'll have this bill at the end of the year that will just be astronomical, that's being spread against all taxpayers in Newport. That was a loan, sorry.
So does that mean... Does that mean a volunteer for the committee?
I would be happy to, and, you know, somebody else who maybe, you know, has thoughts, whatever. I mean, certainly in the...
Let me explain something. We've never had a policy until last year. We had an application process. For me, I don't think we need some full-blown policy. I think the application put specific things on it, where the rules, like you need insurance, you need police approval, you need fire approval, and a fee structure. And I think everybody should pay the fee. I agree. We shouldn't be paying fees and saying to the city that my only exception is, is that it would be nice to allow it out for nonprofits. So anybody that's not a nonprofit should have to pay their full weight and do what they have to do. And I think we can do it with just an application, a fee structure, and some basic rules on the application. We don't need some full-blown procedure to do something that should be a simple task.
Well, I guess I would think a permit process would be a simple task. I mean, it's basically, it's the same, it's the same thing. It's asking for...
Well, the last one didn't turn into a simple task.
I don't know. Everybody except for two people went through it and didn't have a problem. We've had two individuals who thought it was a huge problem, but anyone else? Because you did a survey. You asked, and there wasn't a big problem.
I can say, to me, the only difference between the application and the policy are the titles. It basically is...
We're just doing the same thing. But if it's a, if it's a permit, it's, you know, we call it a permit, and it goes through a different channel rather than to the council.
The other thing, you can do it in no charge. If city service is required, you can invoice them. For the services, invoice that.
This is what I'd like to talk about, the committee.
This is what I'd like to committee, because I saw, I pictured one thing to just...
All kinds of things you can consider.
Right. This is why one of the committees, because it really did work well. We had the issues with the mooring and the dock, remember? Because Kevin chaired that committee, and it worked really well. We had mooring people come in. We had dock people. We had, well, Kevin, I had him sit in. Jim was, of course, harbor commission. And that worked really well to come up with a solution. And that's where I think if we can get a couple council members to work with the city manager at Jazz, work with the department heads, because they know, I think maybe we can put this to bed once and for all and have something that maybe will be just as cut and dry, you know? I think the chief had his hand up.
I was just gonna comment. I talked to Chief Hull from Stowe PD and Chief Ficos from Montpelier PD, and just kind of explained how we were going through the process and what suggestions they would have. For example, in Stowe, if you want to shut down a street or you need police services, you're billed. If you don't pay the bill, you don't get the police services. And again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be anti-event. I love the event. The one thing that Mr. Ross, that you said that kind of concerns me, but maybe I misunderstood what you were saying, was to, you know, to have the department heads go through it and say whether or not we sanction an event. My concern with that would be this. If Aquafest comes to me and says, hey, we're gonna have a thousand-person parade, and we wanna hold it from your standard parade route here to Gardner Park, and I say, yep, no problem. And then, and just hear me out on this, and then the Ku Klux Klan comes and says, I wanna do the same thing from Gardner Park to the gateway. I personally don't wanna be the one responsible that said, yep, I sanctioned that event in the city. Like, that's why, respectfully, that's why you're voted in by the people. If you're telling me I have to do it, then so be it. I just...
I'm not saying that you have to sanction it.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, is that you have to, if she gives it to you, you provide what you're gonna have to do to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Provide, provide services.
The dollar amount, how much...
Right, dollar amount, how many men.
I completely misunderstood what you said. I apologize.
Yeah, no, the sanctioning still has to be through the process.
Okay.
I mean, it was like they were talking about the one in Boston. Well, basically, the one in Boston was Gay Pride Day, and they wanted to have a street pride day event.
Okay.
And you can see where the controversy is, you know?
Well, that's the part that I think what the mayor's talking about could protect.
Against that.
Yes. Yeah, and I think that's important at this point. So Dan, with all your comments, do you have capacity to sit on this committee?
I would like to. I've done the same thing that the mayor did. I looked at Burlington. I don't know how many towns I looked at, and I'm saying to myself, I'm going blind, because nobody, nobody has the perfect situation. You know, but for me, the more simple you make something, the easier it is for people to understand. You know, I like to see things, like if you had a policy, like our policy, you know, the application should be attached to the policy. The fee schedule should be attached to the policy. It's like one-stop shopping. You don't have to go look at three documents in three different places. For me, that simplifies the process. They fill out their application. The rules are there. The fees are there. If you want your event, you're gonna pay. And the only thing is, it's just kind of like when we're zoning. If Tom would sign off on a letter that is adequate sewage or water for a project. He's not approving that project or anything. He's just saying, I can provide those services. And it would be same for the police chief. He can say, I can provide those services. And it could be a situation where, no matter what he did, he wouldn't be able to provide those services, you know?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do it.
I would like to suggest that as a council, we formally endorse the idea of creating a study committee with two counselors, city manager, rec, one rec committee member, and... and two event organizers. Whether it's a seasoned event organizer or somebody who's just done it once, twice. I know it's, it's a, that's a big group to manage, but I think it's the only fair way that we can achieve.
I think that would work, because...
Does the rec committee? Does that make sense for them? Excuse me, I just want to check, does, does it make sense to have a rec committee member on there, given that they don't have any authority per se?
It would be good for them. I can think of a couple that have experience hosting events, or they're learning as they go, but...
No, I look at that as having a couple of the rec people, because we did that with the harbor, I mean, with the dock, you had dock people, you had mooring people, you had people who don't even, actually, there was one gentleman who was interested, who I don't even think had a slip or a mooring, but he had a vote somewhere around us, and so I think it worked out well, having that, so. Did you want to make that in the motion? So that we have a...
Jesse's got a couple people that have experience, but we want to be careful. Rec committee people only deal with city events. They do not deal with private events.
Well, there are, there are rec committee members that have hosted their own forum hall tournaments or done their own things that are not rec committee associated.
Yeah, I mean, a rec committee member, they're concerned with city events, not private.
But if the ordinance policy, whatever we're going to call it, falls under the rec department, then a rec committee member should, at least...
But you have to come up with some kind of a fee schedule because all events aren't the same. You can't be under generic fee schedule. Maybe have a 10-person event.
We can work that out.
Yeah, that's all going to be part of the committee and come up with the idea.
Otherwise, it's pretty generic.
Okay, so...
It is like Burlington has, I don't know how many shelters along the lake, and they have a fee for their shelters. And it don't matter who you are, if you rent one of their shelters for a day, you pay the fee. So in our case, if you rent the gazebo, you pay the fee.
Yeah.
You know, it's a...
Okay. Would you like to make the motion?
Are you ready to write, Jen? So I'd like to move that the council formally endorse creating a study committee of two city counselors, one city manager, one rec director, minimum of one rec committee member, and a minimum of two event organizers.
Just hum the Christmas song while you're writing it down.
I'll write it down for you.
So a motion was made, the motion was made to create a study, event study committee consisting of one city manager, one rec director, two city council members, one rec committee member...
A minimum of...
A minimum of, and two event coordinators.
Minimum of.
Minimum of, two event coordinators.
I remembered that. Nice job.
Any discussion, is there a second to that motion? Made and seconded. Discussion on that motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I thank you, and I appreciate the council for your...
Now, now I want to bring up another, another issue. If I have an advisory board meeting for my program, I have to warn that meeting. If we're going to have meetings and you're part of a, being a municipality, we have to warn our meetings.
Did you guys warn your, did you warn your meetings when you did the study grant, do you remember? You didn't, because it was a subcommittee.
Mr. Mayor, speaking, I, and I think I can speak on behalf of my fellow members of the journalistic profession. Whether or not you're legally required to warn the meetings, these are going to be public meetings, you're not going to be able to hold them behind closed doors, and at the very least, it would be a courtesy to let people who might be interested and might have something to contribute to the discussion know when these meetings are. And I understand that...
You can order it at midnight on a Friday night?
If you want it.
If you want it.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if I know it's at midnight on a Friday night, I'm more likely to show up than if I don't know.
No 2:00 in the afternoon, that's my neck line.
You may not.
We did, yes. Okay, very good. Okay. That was all I had on new business. I know it was quite a bit. I felt it was important to clear, clear my mind and clear things up.
I'd be glad you did it.
Yes, I am.
Mr. Mayor, what is a policy now, or maybe I can get a copy? Is there any policy in place? Because I was...
Yes, we've been going by one. It's on the, it's on the...
On the website.
On the website. Okay. I'm going to move on. Mr. Johnson, any new business?
Yeah, I just have everybody's information. Start on July 1st. No longer will you be able to walk into my office, get a birth certificate. You have to fill out an application, it has to be sent to the state, and they will issue you a parent, a grandparent, a sibling. An attorney is in charge of the state. No longer going to be just walking in that department. You can't go.
I have a question.
Start July 1st.
Recordings are now $15 a page. So if you sell your house or buy a house, and you have a 20-page document, it used to be $10 a page, now it's 15. Now, that 15, the $5, and I understood it is to go to you for restoring...
Record?
No, for digitize.
Four dollars.
Four dollars. The state keeps $1, Robert. But that's something that's being enacted July 1st too, which...
Through state, state legislation?
Through state legislation, yep. So a recording now is $15.
Well, if you need a birth certificate, get it now.
Yeah.
We'll see how many copies we have. We didn't know.
I'm just, I'm just telling you.
Anything else? Anything else? Any new business, Mr. Shabro?
Yes, actually. I've been talking with a few odd and assorted people throughout the community who have mentioned, and I agree, the noise for motorcycles and Mack trucks is out of control. And I, I know I had suggested a few years ago, actually, before I was on the council, that we put up a couple of no-engine-brake signs, like coming down the Derby Road, and maybe one on the other entrance, whatever is the main truck route into the city. I don't know what to do about motorcycles, but the blasting noise, I live right off of East Main Street, and it is just incredibly noisy. So I, I'd like to consider whatever we could do and certainly get input from the chief, but I, I think at minimum, the no-engine-brake signs would be an easy intervention with no enforcement restrictions or requirements.
Motorcycles would be very difficult, right?
Just off the top of my head, without researching or doing anything else, I would say it would be difficult, of course, but I'd certainly look into it.
I know you're, I know what you're talking about. There's a couple of them that go through Sias Avenue. Boy, are they loud. You get it louder than I do, because you're right on Sias.
The basis is that it's like motorcycle in the open road, yet radio blaring even louder than the motorcycle.
I know. Turn it on, hell.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to get in a motorcycle, you take the baffled out to make them louder.
Can I quote you on that one?
So could we maybe have that as an agenda? I don't know.
Maybe the chief can get into it and then get back.
That would be perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else on new business?
Nope.
Anything new?
Nope.
Any new business?
Talk for me.
Okay, we'll move on. Old business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Shabro.
No.
Mr. Moore.
Nope.
I don't have any old business. No business. Okay, then the next meeting will be... We have, I was going to say, the next meeting would be July 1st, but that's a holiday week. Do you want to meet that week?
Nope. We don't, I don't.
I'd use somebody to take my place.
We could postpone it to the following, because July's three Mondays, well, five Mondays, so we still wouldn't have one every other.
If you postponed it to, bear with me just a moment, you'll have two, I think you'll have two meetings in a row. Just look at the calendar. You're already scheduled for July 1st and then July 15th, so if you postpone it, you have it July 8th and July 15th. Could you postpone both? I know we're messing with the... If you make the motion, you could... I hope we do it the 8th and the 22nd, then you'll be on your regular, every other Monday schedule. That's up to you.
We could have the 8th and the 22nd.
We'll be on vacation too, but you can do it tomorrow. We can make it that, you know?
Yeah. So, so we'll do, the next regular meeting would be Monday, July 8th, 6:30 PM here in the council.
And after that, be the 22nd.
It'll be the 22nd then.
That's very accommodating, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Then we need a motion to adjourn at 8:30.
I'm moved.
Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'd never welcome the gentleman from BT Digger. Just hired. See, I read all the different things, I recognize faces.